I just want to also express appreciation for all of the public comment that we've received over the last few months really related to our district supporting equity efforts, racial equity work and inclusion. Really, every student has the right to have an accessible education, to be included in their school, to feel safe and welcome in their schools and in their community and in their classrooms with their peers. And so tonight, I just wanted to update the board on a number of efforts that we are engaged in around supporting our equity, racial equity and inclusion work in Lake Washington. Provide some framework for how we're talking about it with both our administrators and our staff and then actually talk about some of the specifics of the work, knowing that this is work that will be ongoing forever. It is our obligation to make sure that we are always analyzing and taking action on our systems so that students can access their education. And so it's important to note that all of our equity work is in alignment with our mission and vision. And I know we've spent a lot of time talking about our mission in terms of each student graduating, but I also want to talk about that second half of our mission. When you think about a student graduating prepared to lead a rewarding and responsible life as a contributing member of our community and greater society, we have an obligation to provide students with space and context to actually have dialogue around issues. And when you think about students actually dialoguing with one another, with a teacher facilitating that conversation focused on race and equity and the conversation about race going on across our country, those are challenging conversations. But if we truly are helping our students become ready for their future, then I think it's important that we actually have those meaningful dialogue as our students are within our school district so that as they leave our school district, they actually can bring those values, that ethic around all people being equal within our communities and all people having opportunity and access, whether it's within our school system or any system within our society. And then I think about our vision, every student future ready. If we truly are to have students be ready for their future, it's important that they understand how to engage with peers that may have different backgrounds, different cultural experiences of different races. Those are critically important aspects to our students being future ready. And so I know we talk a lot about our mission and vision about graduation and being prepared for college in the global workplace, but it's also about preparing students for those rich, engaging conversations, actually being uncomfortable in conversations, understanding, empathizing around issues of race inequity. And so when I think about creating students that are ready for their community, prepared for their future, this is an aspect that we want to think about as well. But it's also about our values and these values come from our strategic plan. And you can see here a focus on students, learning, connections and results. And these really are values for every student that we serve. And so when you think about everything we do is focused on our students, it's about rich curriculum in inclusive classrooms. And when you think of an inclusive classroom, there are students in our system right now that don't feel safe and included in our classrooms. And so it's important that our equity, racial equity and inclusion work actually focuses on making sure that our systems and our schools and our classrooms are inclusive for each and every student. Our focus on learning, that we set rigorous, high achieving goals for each and every one of our students and that we provide the resources and supports necessary so that students can achieve those high learning outcomes. And connections, we know that engaging with our community around issues of race, issues of equity, issues of learning and success and inclusion, that's important so that our organization can really develop an understanding of how we can best serve our community. And then focusing on results, every student can achieve excellence, every student can achieve greatness. And so our focus on results isn't just for results sake, but it's actually because we believe every student we serve can achieve at high, high levels, which is going to make our community a better place, make our country a better place because we, students are leaving our system prepared for their futures. I want to also start by just providing an overview of the racial makeup of our school district. It's a point of discussion often, and so I just wanted to remind the board as we're thinking about all of this work, the students that make up our school district. And so you can see here, we have our American Indian Alaska native, it's less than 1%. And I would also argue that that makes it even at times more challenging for those students to feel safe and included in our schools. And so when we think about our efforts, we have to be intentional to make sure that those students, our American Indian Alaska native, feel safe and included and that they can show up in our schools and that they don't have to leave anything at the door to be a part of our classrooms. We have about 30% of our students reporting that they are Asian, just under 2% of our students reporting that they are black or African American, about 10 and a half percent of our students reporting that they're either Hispanic or Latino of any races. And we do have a native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander population. Again, it's a small percent of our overall number, but we're happy to report that we do have a thriving population of native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islanders in our school district. We have students that report that they actually are two or more races. And so that is undefined for us, which races they are reporting, but for them, how they present is actually represented in multiple races. And then we have 49% of our students that report that they are white or Caucasian. And so I love this quote because I think it allows all of us to grow while also providing a call for urgency. And Maya Angelou says, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." And so when I think about the national narrative, when I think about the scenes that we have seen play out on the TV over the last number of months, when I think about the global pandemic and how that just exposed inequities in our systems and we can do better. And so tonight's presentation is step one in us thinking about how can we do better, not just in the long term, but also in the short term. And so why the term each that we use in our mission and our vision? And so when you think about that in order to personally thrive and achieve greatness, each student must feel safe and welcome for who they are and they also must have access to support and challenge for who they are becoming. So it's about who they are today, but it's also about how are we helping them grow to become who they want to be? And so that's an important aspect to our work. It's also that in order to be a contributing member of a dynamic and pluralistic society, that each student must be able to take perspective and empathize with others from diverse backgrounds and cultures. It isn't just about being able to talk with or engage with a peer that has a different racial or cultural background, but it's actually being able to understand their perspective that they are bringing to that conversation and that dialogue within our classrooms when we are talking about content, math, history, English, language arts, science, all of these different perspectives that come into the classroom actually make all of our students better because it allows them to actually consider, empathize and gain a perspective that they may not have had before. But it's also to be able to consider others and show a desire to contribute to the well-being of school and community. And so by allowing students the opportunity to empathize and actually truly consider other people's perspective, it does contribute to that well-being of the school and the overall This is a pretty busy graphic, and so I just want to, what's the purpose of this graphic? It's about becoming well-doing, so knowing that we want to become a better organization, a better system, one that supports all students, one that doesn't have predictable data outcomes. And so we want to become that, but we also have to have the urgency to actually take steps today that while we're going through that personal growth, while we're going through that system's growth, that we also are actually taking action today. And I love that phrase on the bottom, creating hope for all, that we are becoming well-doing, we are assessing, we're reflecting, we're planning and implementing change in the context of being a learning leader, but also a learning organization and creating hope for all. Every person that we serve deserves the opportunity to be hopeful for their future, hopeful for their outcomes, hopeful for their child. And so this allows us to think about all of our work as we move forward. Another way that we think about our work is the golden circle, so really honing in on what we call our why, our fundamental purpose as an organization. And so there's three distinct parts to the golden circle, the what, how and the why. And the what we do is that we educate students. How do we do that? We implement high quality teaching and learning that addresses the needs of all students. And when you think about high quality teaching and learning, it's about the teacher, but it's not just about the teacher. Think about everything that it takes for a student to actually receive benefit from their classroom teacher's instruction and it takes everybody, all adults, our community, making sure that students have access, that they feel safe walking into their classroom so that they can benefit and learn from their teacher. And our why, we are mission driven and we believe that our work creates a better world and is always focused on our students. And when I talked with our administrators and I talked with our staff, administrators earlier this August, our staff just this morning, I thought this is good, but I also want to expand on it just a little bit more. The what we do, I think we actually do a little bit more than just educate because I actually believe we change lives. I believe we actually tilt trajectories. We actually have the opportunity to work with students to actually provide them with that hope, that vision for excellence, that opportunity to achieve their greatness. And we provide hope for our students, our community, our families, and we love our students unconditionally. Our students come to us with the best of themselves and it is our job to love them and provide them the supports necessary so that they can grow. And then how do we do it? We do it by addressing systems that marginalize, being able to actually analyze and understand the systems within our school district that have marginalized certain populations and addressing those because every group of students, every individual student deserves to have the full access to our school system. We do it by providing excellent instruction to every student. One of the things I said to staff this morning is that high quality instruction is equity work because when you think about having rigorous curriculum that every student has access to, that every student has the highest of excellent standards for them and that we're holding students accountable to those high benchmarks, that is equity work because then we're not providing one thing for one student and another thing for another student, but every student receives that high level excellent instruction. And we do it by creating spaces where individuals can show up. And when I say show up, it means that I can bring myself, my culture, who I really am into our classrooms and that is perfect for that classroom because I'm being who I am. And we do it by tending to the social emotional well-being needs of students because we know our students at times struggle with mental health and engagement with peers. And so we actually pay attention to that work as well. And we do it by committing to the success of our organization, ensuring that we are fully analyzing our systems to make it better for all of our students. And we do it by engaging our community as partners because we know as we engage with our parents, as we listen to them, as we hear from them, we can actually learn and actually address organizational issues, systems, we can bring them in to be partners with us in their child's work. And then why, why do we do this work? Well, we do it because we believe each child can achieve greatness. And when I say each child, I mean each and every child, all 31,000 plus students can achieve greatness regardless of any factor, race, ethnicity, income levels, we believe every student can achieve greatness. And then when we think about if our what, our how and our why are connected and articulated to students, then our actions should always communicate the following, that each child's success matters to me as an individual employee in Lake Washington, each child's success matters to me, that each child's success matters to our school, that an individual's success actually matters to that school community and that each child's success matters to our district. The outcomes, the achievement of excellence, it does matter to our overall district and that each child's success does matter to the community because when every child is successful, our communities actually are richer and overall better. And each child's success just matters. And so those are the things that should be communicated when we actually have our what, how and why articulated to students. And so want to talk a little bit about the purpose of equity. You may have seen some of this written documentation before, but it's really to ensure that academic success for all students by closing opportunity gaps for students and providing equitable and inclusive working and learning environments for all students, families, staff and communities. And that by committing to equity, we will remove the predictability of success and failure that currently correlates with race or any social cultural factors. I talked about that a little bit before, that the predictability in our data, our goal is that there is no predictability so that all students are being successful and that when students do struggle, it isn't predicted by race and other factors, but it's because they're struggling and we can provide that support. But by committing to equity, it also interrupts inequitable practices, examine biases and create inclusive school environments for all students and discover and cultivate the unique gifts, talents and interests that every human possesses. And I'll talk a little bit about the idea of assets later in this presentation, but when you think about every student is bringing assets into the classroom that as educators, we actually can capitalize on those assets, we can build upon those assets to make the classroom richer, but also to help that student grow and learn. And when we think about the overall equity work in Lake Washington School District, I talk about it in three kind of buckets that really are all interrelated. And when you think about the racial equity work, the national dialogue right now is very focused on issues of race and rightfully so. And so we also want to pay attention to issues of race within our school district because when you look at our data, we know that race is a predictor within our data. And so thinking about race, understanding race, knowing that race and other factors, they do intersect. When you think about equity, we have other populations that have been marginalized within our school system. And so we want to make sure that we are paying attention to different ability learners. We want to pay attention to language issues, we want to students that live in poverty. And so we want to make sure that we actually are addressing other systems or other groups of students that have been marginalized. And then when you think about inclusion, inclusion is really that overall effort and consideration to make sure that every student feels comfortable, safe and included in their When I was talking with our district leadership team earlier this summer, I kind of thought about our equity work within systems change because we know that if we don't actually address systems, all we're doing is addressing individual situations. And so how do I view and think about the overall support system to change? There's three different components. One, there's individual work. Each person, each employee in Lake Washington really does have a professional obligation to focus on professional growth and understanding of issues related to equity, racial equity and systems of marginalization. And so it's important that each of us continues on that personal journey to better understand how our system has been accessible or not accessible to our students. We also have group work, so teams, we're always working in collaborative teams, professional teams. Each team has an obligation to collectively focus on issues related to equity, racial equity and systems of marginalization because our groups actually are decision-making bodies at times. When you think about a group of teachers talking about instruction and assessment, they're making decisions that directly impact students. And so we want those groups of professionals focused on our equity work in considerations of equity. And then we have organizational work. And so as an organization, Lake Washington has an obligation to provide collective voice and experience related to equity, racial equity and systems of marginalization and that our collective work must focus on changes, adjustments and enhancements to our system. But it isn't that these are desperate pieces, they're really all, if you will, cogs of the wheel. They all are unique and individual of themselves, but they all interwork with one another and they all have to actually work together for our system to grow and change. And so I want to talk a little bit about the individual work that I talked about. And so one of the ways that we talk about that individual work is the cycle of cultural competency or another way to put it, humility. And so this is a cycle that starts with awareness, building of knowledge, working on skills to actually address cultural competency and then being willing to take action and advocate for those that may have been marginalized by our systems. And so this is a cycle that we continue to work on as individuals and as we grow and learn, this is a cycle that we go back to often. Our work around courageous conversations, the compass really helps us to think about how do people enter into conversations as we think about issues related to race? And so you can see there on the compass, there's kind of four different ways that courageous conversations says that people come to these conversations. One is in a believing frame of mind, kind of thinking or analytical, acting, kind of taking action or feelings. And so as you think about how you come into these conversations, this helps us understand why an individual might be talking about solutions or outcomes based on how they're entering the conversation. And as other people are identifying how they're entering the conversation, then it actually allows for an empathetic and very meaningful conversation because we can actually understand the perspectives that people are coming to the conversation with. And then we also have agreements that have come out of our courageous conversations work about staying engaged, be in the conversation and it's okay to experience discomfort, which is that second agreement. When we're talking about issues of race, we know that those can be uncomfortable discussions because we're hearing about people's perspective about a deeply personal situation, that can be uncomfortable, but that's okay. That's part of growing and empathy, that's part of growing in our understanding of one another and that's actually what leads to safe and inclusive spaces for our students and staff. Speaking your truth, at times someone's truth might be hard to hear, at times someone's truth might be different than yours. It also, you might disagree with their truth and that's okay because you're engaged in that conversation, you might be uncomfortable, but it's okay for them to be able to speak their truth and just leave it in that conversation. And we also know that conversations around race, that we have to expect and accept non-closure, that rarely do you end a conversation and it is concluded because dialogue around race, it actually doesn't conclude. We always are just growing and learning, knowing that we're going to come back to the conversation at a later date to continue our work as an organization, as a group, as individuals growing professionally. And then when I think about the accountability aspect and some of the frameworks that we use for professional growth and evaluation for our administrators and our teachers, I pulled out a couple of quotes from the leadership framework that we use to work with our building administrators. It was designed by the Association of Washington School Principals. And it says, "Racially literate leaders actively pursue a deep understanding of their own individual racial identity, continually hone their ability to recognize structural and systemic racism and courageously change the status quo. Developing and applying a skill set that identifies and engages families historically underserved is a powerful way for a school leader to assure a more equal opportunity to learn for each student in a school." So you can see even in our leadership framework that we work with our building administrators deeply rooted in our equity and racial equity work. And then for our instructional staff, Charlotte Danielson, the instructional framework for professional growth and evaluation, comment from that framework says that teachers strive for excellence, but a commitment to excellence is not complete without a commitment to equity. Each student deserves access to a world-class teaching and learning environment that promote joyful inquiry, intelligent rigor and reflection. And when you think about our leaders and our teachers, thinking about their work with students and families in this way, you can see how that will lead to a more equitable and just school system for our students. One of the things that we are currently in the development phase of and will be releasing to our instructional staff, our teaching staff here in the next couple of days, is a paper identifying how do we think about welcoming our Black and Brown students back to the classroom? When I think about the images that our students have been watching on the television, the national dialogue, the marginalization and really the oppression that we have seen across the country of a number of our Black and Brown community members, I asked Gloria Henderson and Matt Gillingham really to take, take a look at how do we document a best practices document to support our Black scholars as they come back into our classrooms? Because if I just think about what would it feel like to come back to class right now as a Black student, I might have some questions about, am I safe? Am I going to be welcomed into this classroom space? How is it going to feel? Are people going to ask questions? Are people just going to wonder and actually not ask questions? And so we're putting this together to help our educators think about how do we do this well and how do we actually shine a light on a very important topic? And so you can see this document is titled, "Letting the Light Shine: Supporting the Brilliance of Black Scholars in Lake Washington School District." And we're proud to support our Black and Brown students and I'm excited about the work that's going on and I'm excited to release this to our educators as we welcome our students back next week on September 1st. We also have that group work that I talked about, that's also an important part of our overall equity work. And so when you think about authentic community engagement, it's something that we are thinking about as a system and we want to make sure that we actually are moving along the continuum of community engagement to make sure that all of our engagement isn't just in that kind of left side in form. We actually want to engage our families around consult, involve, collaborate, empower because we know that when families are truly engaged in their child's education, that children learn better, they feel more connected at school, they feel a high level of meaning within their school setting. And so truly authentically engaging with our community is a critical part of our equity, racial equity and inclusion work moving forward. I want to talk about our equity teams. We have both a district equity team and school-based equity teams. And so our district equity team led by Gloria Henderson, our Director of Opportunity Equity and Inclusion. And a couple of things that we want to make sure that this team is helping to support this this year is the development of policy for Lake Washington, providing insights, advisement, advice around the policy and also taking a look at department level goals, which I'll talk a little bit more in a minute. But the idea of this group of individuals coming together with that equity and racial equity lens, providing feedback and perspective so that our policy and department work is as rich and meaningful as it can be. And then our building equity teams. Each of our schools is expected to have a building equity team. That work started a couple of years ago and then we're going to make sure that this year moving forward to invite our parents to be members of those teams because we know as we are having dialogue and conversation around issues of equity within our schools, to have a parent perspective is critically important and to have parents of color providing feedback on those teams is also going to help those teams in our schools to be more equitable and accessible by our communities. And then system, when I think you heard the term earlier from the AWSP Leadership Framework, systemic racism. And when I think about that, it's not about any one individual, it's about a system, how that system was set up, how that system plays How that system was set up, how that system plays out and who that system allows to most benefit from that overall structure. And so we want to make sure that our system is set up so that all 31,000 of our students can access our district, our system, our schools, our classrooms, and ultimately their opportunity to learn. And so I want to talk about a couple of things here, but I also want to frame this. When I think about our system, it isn't about fixing someone. It isn't about fixing a Black or a Brown student. It's about really addressing our system because those students are coming with assets. Those students are coming to us and they are ready to achieve excellence. And it's about how are we approaching the work to make sure that we are giving them every opportunity to be excellent? Giving them the tools, the support, the challenge, the rigor so that they can actually achieve that excellence. And so when I think about our work as a system, I think about it in an asset-based approach. So it's not about fixing, it's not about doing something to someone, but it's about how do we build upon the assets that our students are bringing, that our community is bringing to us so that we can support and help students grow. And to me, an asset-based approach at the system level, it drives on the strengths of our community, our students, our, our parents, that it's opportunity-focused, it's internally-focused and reflective. And we ask questions like, what is present that we can build upon? And it may lead to new and unexpected responses to community wishes. We never know what's going to come when we actually have a growth mindset, asset-based approach when we think about this work. And specifically to policy. The board is adopted a plan, a work plan of the board tonight on your consent agenda that really detailed out the work that you're going to do this year to adopt board-level policy. And the school board owns and manages board policy. And what does it do? It defines values, actions and behavior of the board. It defines your relationship with the superintendent as well as the expectation for operations and results. And so the board is going to go through and develop an operational expectations policy specific to equity, knowing that these will be the expectations that you are evaluating, that you are expecting anecdotal and hard data on to make sure that the district is complying and really meeting those expectations. But we also are looking and will be adopting an administrative policy. An administrative policy is different from board policy. And it's policy that you have delegated to me as superintendent, so I own and manage the administrative policies. And what that does is it defines the values, actions and behaviors of the district. It, it's, we look at state-required actions of the superintendent and the school board within our administrative policy. But it's also about the specific operational actions and requirements for managing processes, procedures of the district. And so we'll also be adopting an equity policy in that phase as well. And then each of our departments is going to be setting goals specific to their job responsibilities and the work that they have influence over. And you've all heard of SMART goals, strategic, measurable, ambitious, realistic and time-bound. Well, if you add an I and an E, we also want our goals to be inclusive and equitable. That's a critical piece to our department goals focused on equity. Because when you think about the system that we are thinking about and wanting to make as accessible and available to all of our stakeholder groups, it takes each and every department to meaningfully look at their work, the things, the outcomes that they're producing in their departments, to actually put an equity lens on their work to make sure that the outcomes they're producing don't marginalize populations, don't marginalize historically underserved or underrepresented groups. Because we want to make sure that all of our departments are doing their equity work as well. And so every person in Lake Washington has that personal work. They're doing that work as a group and then our departments have outcomes as well. And so some of the work around that will be to review the plan template and reflect about how the department will, can consider systemic changes supporting more equitable outcomes. And that's very broad, but when you think about the number of departments and systems that we're talking about, it's important that each person takes the time to actually reflect about their own department and the outcomes that they're producing and how they can be more equitable. We're going to have each of our departments around their goals consult with our Director of Opportunity, Equity and Inclusion along with their supervisor and engage with our district equity team to gather insight, to inform the goals and plans. And so when you think about having kind of a third-party input to be able to reflect on, to be able to provide perspective, that's an important part of our department goals is so that we're gaining additional perspective, not just an internal perspective. We'll draft a goal and plan and submit that to their supervisor and the Director of Opportunity, Equity and Inclusion for review and really review and feedback. And then as we go, it's all always about analyzing and revising goals and plans based on feedback and finalize for publication. And we will publish these goals so that our community understands what is the work that's going on at the systems level because with so many departments, it's really challenging for us to be able to show everything. And so that's, this is one way that we can actually be transparent in the work that we're doing. And then implement the plan and engage stakeholders throughout the, the implementation. And then share results and reflect. When we think about setting goals for ourselves, we also want to actually measure results and outcomes and be reflective of that so that we can then go back through this process as we continue our work. And then within our strategic plan, I just want to point out, actually, all of these items actually have equity work within them. But I'm just going to point out a few of the overall pieces of work that are, that's going on in the district related to our overall commitment to equity. And so our, our work around culturally responsive teaching, actually training all of our staff members in the SIAT protocols is part of our work. Our work around developing multi-tiered systems of support focused on academics so that our schools have actual systems that they are responding to, analyzing student-level data. And we're actually taking action to support our students. And then at the very bottom, you can see our inclusive early learning initiative, really making sure that our early learning programs are inclusive and supportive of our, of our students and our community. And then in the area of wellbeing, you can see here the multi-tiered systems of support focused on the behavioral, social, emotional support, knowing that there is also data that we can be responsive to in, in this area as well, knowing that as students have outcomes in behavior or there's social-emotional challenges, that that data can be analyzed and we can actually provide supports as needed. The school equity teams that I just talked about. And then activities and athletics, actually analyzing who's participating and who's not and how do we make sure that communities or groups of students that don't see themselves able to participate in our athletics or activities programs, that we actually are developing an understanding of why and taking steps to make sure that those are accessible. Because we know when students are connected to their schools in a number of different ways and in our activities and our athletics, our primary ways that students find connections, that they, the outcomes for those students are increased. And then when we think about our work around community engagement, I talked about our district equity team. We also, the idea of culturally responsive family engagement, ongoing work to develop systems so that we actually are engaging with our community on a much deeper level. Gloria Henderson, our Director of Opportunity, Equity and Inclusion is actually working with her team to think about how do we provide this level of culturally responsive family engagement to our communities? And how do we provide access to information and things like that, such as translation services and whatnot? And then excellent staff, our workforce diversity. Actually paying attention to our recruitment efforts, our interview processes, the training that we provide to those that participate in interview processes, making sure that the questions that we are asking candidates aren't biased, making sure that our interviewers actually understand how do you hear responses and how do you understand the biases that you're bringing into the interviews? Because it isn't just about hiring more people of color. It's about diversifying our workforce because it creates a richness within our community. You saw at the very beginning of this presentation, the overall makeup in relation to race of our students. And so when you think about the importance of students seeing educators and staff that look like them, there's great research that shows that that actually improves their vision for themselves, their identification of themselves being able, able to achieve excellence. And it also provides an opportunity for all of our students to experience individuals that are different from them as they go through our school system. I think about how important it is for any of our students to go through the school system and have very unique experiences with educators with multiple different backgrounds, race being one of them, as they go through our school system. I'm proud of the work we've done in this, in this space, hiring a more diverse teaching staff, a more diverse administrative staff, because it provides that great perspective and outcomes for our kids when they see that there are individuals within our school system that they can relate to in terms of race and ethnicity. And that provides them with models of excellence. And so that's work that's always ongoing and I'm proud of the work that we have done. And then when I think about the effective use of resources, our resources really define our equity work. And one of the ways we're doing that is through the analysis of our transportation systems, being thoughtful about how does transportation actually lead to better outcomes? Because we know that systems such as these have been in place for a long time and we want to make sure that as we think about transportation as a service, as a system, leading to student outcomes, that we actually understand, does our system lead to marginalization of populations or communities? And if so, what can we do about that? So that's work that is ongoing right now within our system. And one of the things we've done for transparency is we've actually updated our website. And so there's two distinct parts of our website. Gloria Henderson is our Director of Opportunity, Inclusion and Equity, excuse me. She has her department website. What you're seeing here is a new portion of our website because equity isn't just Gloria's job. Yes, Gloria is a leader in this work. She provides, she's a valuable resource to our organization and is helping us think about our overall work. But leading and all of our equity work, that is everybody's responsibility within the organization. And so we developed a site that it's under the About Us section of our website. And so within there, you'll see a number of the pieces that I reported on tonight. You can see a statement here that I made to our teaching staff last Friday as I welcomed them back to the school year 2021. And so this is another place and space where people that have questions about our overall equity work, they can go to this, this space to understand some of the detail of what we're working on. And we'll continue to build this out to be transparent and communicative with our community. And that's my report on our overall equity work.